Welcome to the sixth in the series of political candidate forums in advance of the November 5th general election. This forum is a cooperative production of the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee, the Tallahassee Democrat, and WFSU Public Media. Our candidates today are running for the Tallahassee City Commission position. I'm Suzanne Smith from WFSU Public Media, and I'm joined by William Hatfield from the Tallahassee Democrat and Danielle Irwin from the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee. We'll be questioning the candidates on various topics of interest to the voting public.
The candidates for the Tallahassee City Commission seat two, sitting left to right, are Dot Inman Johnson versus Curtis Richardson, who is the incumbent in this race. Reminder for those watching us on social media, please hit the share button and help all your friends see today's discussion live. For those at home, here is how the forums are going to work. We will rotate which candidate gets to answer first. We have a lot of questions, so we're going to ask the candidates to keep your answers to about 60 seconds, sometimes shorter for follow-ups. We will keep time, and we have a very sophisticated way of keeping time. When your time is up, you will hear this. You don't have to come to a dead stop right then, but please finish your sentence, and we will move on. We have a lot of questions.
If you're watching live on Facebook and you have a question for the candidates, go ahead and type them in the comments section, and we'll get to as many of them as we can. Time is very limited, so you can improve your chances of the question being heard. If you keep it brief and polite, make it applicable to both candidates. Any questions before we begin?
We're ready.
Then let's jump in with the first question.
All right, our first topic is natural disasters. We've had some really close calls with hurricanes, especially lately, in which about 10 miles spared the city from a direct hit. What kept you up at night when it looked like a direct hit looked like it was certain? What does the city need to do ahead of next time when we may not be so lucky? This first question will go to Ms. Inman Johnson.
Well, first of all, I was very nervous as a resident, and for Helene, we did evacuate. But I must say that the city did an excellent job, and actually, the hurricane did an excellent job by missing Tallahassee, both Helene and Milton. So we prayed for the areas that were hit hard and for the people who lost everything, but we were very happy and felt blessed that it missed us. We thought the city did a good job of getting the utilities back on.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yeah, thank you. Well, you know, it's interesting. My daughter, who's midshipman at the Naval Academy in Annapolis, called my wife and I and asked us if we would abandon the city. And I quickly told her, I can't do that in the leadership position that I'm in. I have to be here for the people that I represent in the city of Tallahassee. So my wife and I decided we were going to ride it out, which we did. And fortunately, the hurricane took a different route. But I have to give credit to our city manager and all the wonderful staff that we have that work for the city of Tallahassee and the job that they had done to get us back. Within 36 hours, all of the utilities were back on. Our water, of course, we never lost, but they did a great job, and it's practice for the next time, hopefully.
Thank you.
Thank you. We know it comes with a large price tag, but given our recent propensity with storms, is replacing overhead utilities with underground lines something we need to consider? What could the implementation of that look like? And is blueprint, a blueprint-like tax, something worth looking at? There's 45 seconds for this question. We'll start with Mr. Richardson.
Well, you know, that conversation has come up a number of times. It is a very expensive proposition. I mean, like, millions of dollars for undergrounding utilities. Right now, we require new developments to underground their utilities. Southwood, for instance, is one of those. It's a discussion that this city is going to have to have, because even in areas where the utilities were underground, have been undergrounded, the utility still went out because there are apparatus above ground that are impacted by the storm. But it's a discussion that the community is going to have to have, and if we decide that we want to commit ourselves to that kind of expense to underground utilities, then we can possibly do a blueprint-type sales tax increase to fund that.
Thank you. Ms. Inman Johnson?
I don't think we need a tax increase to look at planning now for underground utilities. In blueprint, we've added things that weren't even included at first in the list of what should be covered with that tax. If we start planning and setting aside money in the capital improvements element, we can certainly take care of beginning the process of underground utilities. I think it would be a benefit financially to the city in the long run. For instance, that $27 million or $30 million that went to FSU could have been a first installment toward underground utilities.
We're going to move on to the topic of affordable housing and homelessness. Dot Inman Johnson, we'll begin with you. How can Tallahassee create and preserve enough affordable housing for extremely low-income households? For example, housing and utilities would cost no more than $645 per month for two children and a single parent who works full-time for minimum wage. You have 45 seconds.
Forty-five? I served on both the county and the city Affordable Housing Advisory Committee as Chair, Committees as Chair, and I have been keeping up with the Schimberg Institute's data on affordable housing. The real crisis in Tallahassee in that regard is with affordable rental, and the city just is not planning ahead to address that issue. We should be setting aside incentives to attract developers who are willing to work in that regard, and I know Curtis is going to talk about Columbia Gardens that the city was a partner in bringing forward, but the main persons involved were the Tallahassee Housing Authority.
Thank you.
I would say, first of all, the city of Tallahassee is not in the housing business. We do have partners that we work with that provide housing. For instance, I serve on the board of the Tallahassee Lenders Consortium, and we provide them funding, and we have what we call a community land grant, where the land is donated, so that takes the cost of land out of the housing. But in our strategic plan, affordable housing, particularly the low-income housing, is the second top priority of the city of Tallahassee, and we've made considerable progress in that regard. We have got more housing, affordable housing, in the pipeline and completed today than we did the past 10 or 20 years combined. So we are making considerable progress in that regard.
Thank you. We will move on to the next question, which is directed to you, Curtis Richardson. We'll stay with you on this one. A new law bars counties and cities from allowing a person to regularly camp or sleep on public property. Also, local governments are authorized to designate a public space for camping and sleeping with approval from the state. How should the city enforce this new state law? Forty-five seconds.
Well, that is going to be a tremendous challenge, because, first of all, finding the location, and from what I understand, the law requires that there be running water, that there be lighting, that there be security, and that's going to be a tremendous cost to the taxpayers of communities throughout the state, because it's a requirement for municipalities throughout the state. And so we're going to have to have a conversation again as a community as to how we're going to afford that. And then the interesting part of it, they can be there for a year, then they have to be moved for the next year. So it's not a permanent location. It's only for one year, and they have to move. And again, as the legislature has done, when they did when I was there, it's an unfunded mandate. There's not enough money to cover the expense provided by the state.
Thank you. Dot Inman Johnson, same question to you.
First of all, I want to point out that we have a 25% poverty rate in this community, and something has to be done for affordable housing in the community, and nobody ever said the city builds the houses. Incentives need to be there to make sure they happen. And as far as the homeless issue is, we have to do something. It is something that has to be addressed. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. There are communities all over this country that are doing better in that regard than Tallahassee, and we can learn from the successes of other communities.
So a quick follow-up on that, you know, so does the Kearney Center got this problem kind of in hand, or do we need to look at this camp option that the Florida government has passed down? Dot Inman Johnson, 30 seconds.
We need a more permanent solution to homelessness. Jacksonville attacked it years ago, and they had single-room occupancy facilities where people got help with comprehensive services and jobs, so they were able to move out of those single-room occupancy facilities into regular rental housing.
Right, I mean, in the meanwhile, this law is on the books now. I mean, do we need to look at this camp option, you know, immediately, given that, you know, the city could be at risk?
We have to follow the law.
Right. Commissioner Richardson, same question.
Well, I don't know if Ms. Inman Johnson has been to Jacksonville recently, but they don't have a solution to this issue in Jacksonville either. Homelessness is a growing issue, particularly in Tallahassee, because we are the hub of this region, if you will, and so many people from all over the country, actually, are coming to Tallahassee because of the services that we provide for the homeless here in Tallahassee, especially the Kearney Center, William you mentioned. We need to provide as many and a variety of services, programs and services for the homeless as we can. There won't be one single solution to that issue.
Do you think in the meanwhile, in the short term, given the laws on the books, that we need to pursue this, you know, camp?
Oh, I don't think we have any other option. It's a law, and as Ms. Johnson said, Inman Johnson said, we have to abide by the law and make it happen.
All right, we're going to shift over to city management here. According to its strategic plan, one of the city government's values is to lead with integrity at every level. In your opinion, is city government leading with integrity at every level? If not, what levels are we missing? Curtis Richardson, you get to start us out. You have one minute.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure what you mean by level of integrity, but we do have a city administration that is, I think, second to none. We evaluate our appointed officials on an annual basis, on a one-to-five scale, and each of them, the city manager, the inspector general, our Jim Cook, our treasurer clerk, and the attorney, have all scored well above four in most instances, at least from the three of us who value what they do. And our city has been actually a model for other cities in terms of how she is run and the quality of staff that we have. We're bringing in young people now so that they can learn the inner workings of city government and be ready to fill those positions where we have individuals that will be retiring soon. Our city manager is one of those. He's got enough time in to retire. And so, yeah, I think we have a very well-run city and a model for others to emulate.
Same question, Dot Inman Johnson?
The city models good practices in some areas, but I think the city management is far behind in ruling by integrity. Many city employees have contacted my campaign to say that they are being managed by fear and intimidation. And when I saw the way the city attorney, the former city attorney, Cassandra Jackson, was treated, pretty much driven out of City Hall by the manager and his subordinate staff with the kind of environment they created for her, it made me very concerned and feel a lot of changes need to be made at City Hall. And also, the way they treat the firefighters. For 19 months, those people went without their pay increases while their families suffered, and yes, they have...
We're going to stay with this topic, so we're going to have more to say, and you're going to start us out. This race has been cast as one where the control of City Hall hangs in the balance. If a vote was called shortly after your election, would you keep the current city manager in place? Why or why not? One minute.
Well, I would not be able to act on the city manager before I had an opportunity to give him due process and evaluate him like the other city commissioners have had an opportunity to do, but I would certainly be truthful in that evaluation, and I certainly don't think he deserves a five rating.
So the evaluation process occurs once a year, and it just happened. Would that mean that there would not be any vote on changing of the city manager until, I guess, around next year at this time?
Well, I would certainly voice my opinion about his performance, and I think it has been dismal in some areas, but it takes three commissioners to act on anything in city government.
Okay. Curtis Richardson, same question.
Well, I don't think there's any question of what that vote would look like, based on the fact that Ms. Inman Johnson said that she was running when she announced her campaign that she was running to give the current philosophical minority, if you will, on the commission a third vote. And it's been clear that my colleagues, two of my colleagues on the commission currently have a disdain for our city manager, and they don't have a good relationship, and I know that they would probably try to act to get rid of the city manager under that circumstance. I think he's doing a good job. Our city is very well-run. He's at the leadership, the performance of staff over the last several months when we've had natural disasters, and how we've brought our city back and the services that we've provided to our citizens, that's the evidence of the leadership that he has provided, and I think is due to keep his position.
15 seconds to respond, Dot Inman Johnson?
Yes, but those two commissioners have a reason to show disdain, because the city manager doesn't even give them the benefit of telling them what's going on. He talks basically to the three in power.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson, we often talk about the three-to-two voting block. You just mentioned the number three. What is a key example where you went in a different direction and why? 30 seconds.
When you say in a different direction?
Like, a different direction from the three? You know, like, when we talk about voting block? What is an example of where you went in a different direction?
I have served on three collegial bodies, as a school board member, in the Florida House of Representatives, and now on the city commission, and I've had the opportunity to work with individuals from varying backgrounds, different political parties, and in every instance, I have been able to work collaboratively with those individuals to get things done.
Any specific example come to mind? In the most recent, you know, the current city commission?
I couldn't tell you a specific vote that we took, no. Because actually, 90% of the votes that we take are unanimous votes. And so if you want me to use that as an instance, then yes.
Okay. Ms. Inman Johnson, you are part of Jeremy Matlow's One Tallahassee slate of candidates. What's one key area you disagree with Commissioner Matlow on? 30 seconds.
Well, I don't know all the votes, like Curtis does, that they've taken, but I can tell you for a fact, I am a declared progressive. Matlow and Porter are progressives. All of the city commissioners are Democrats, but only two of them vote like Democrats.
Is there any specific area you can highlight that you would, you know, take a different approach than Commissioner Matlow?
I don't know where I would take a different vote offhand, but I would approach some of the issues differently, because I have the instinct to try to bring people together. And so I would probably moderate how I disagree.
Okay. Curtis Richardson, 15 seconds.
Yeah, William, you know, this thing about political party, these are nonpartisan races. I have been a registered Democrat since 1974. I have voted Democrat. I have served as a Democrat elected official, but the city commission seats are nonpartisan.
Thank you. Dot Inman Johnson, you get the last 15 seconds, then we're going to go to another topic, because we've got a lot.
Yes, the political party might not be important, but the issues are, and there are progressive issues where you are bringing people under the big tent and trying to deal with the needs of the people in your community, and Curtis doesn't do that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to public safety. In 2023, the city was rocked by a summer surge in shootings. This summer, it was a drastic difference with far fewer shootings and shocking homicides. What do you attribute to that shift? 45 seconds, we'll start with Commissioner Richardson.
The comprehensive approach that we've used to address crime in our community. My family has been indirectly affected by it. A young man was killed not far from our neighborhood. He was a personal friend of my daughter, and it was a neighbor that was the perpetrator. But we tried to put in programs in place to intervene early in the lives of these young people, to steer them away from crime, but we also have invested in public safety by hiring additional police officers and investing in the technology that they use now to solve a lot of these crimes. And we attribute a lot of that to that comprehensive approach and the crime reduction that we've seen over the past year.
Ms. Inman Johnson, what do you attribute to that shift?
What do I attribute?
To the shift in the fewer shootings and homicides?
I attribute it to poverty and a lot of the inequities that people are going through in this community, and if you don't do anything to address the poverty issue in this community, we're going to continue to see this. And we also have to have programs for younger children who haven't gotten into that pipeline already. I serve on the council for the status of men and boys and on the research and planning committee, and we are working very hard to try to address that issue.
What do you attribute to the shift from the surge in 2023 to the lower numbers this summer?
I think the biggest problem was the gun violence. If you look at all of the crime, maybe it shifted, but the gun violence hasn't changed that much.
While reports of violent crime have subsided in recent months, crime does remain an issue in our community, including burglaries, as well as the need for extra patrols in neighborhoods and addressing pedestrian safety and speeding violations. If you sat down in a one-on-one today with Chief Revell, what would you ask TPD to address immediately? 45 seconds, Mr. Richardson, we'll begin with you.
Well, there's no question that violent crime... Well, there's no question that violent crime in our community continues to be an issue. And what we found is that 53% of the gun crimes that are committed are by stolen guns from unlocked cars. And so we've partnered with the Urban League, and they've got a marketing campaign, you may have seen the yard signs around town, to encourage people to make sure that, first of all, they don't leave a loaded gun in a car, but if they do, to make sure that that car is locked and the gun is secured. And so that's the thing that we will continue to focus on. And we have seen, based on the initiatives that we've put in place, including the Commission on the Status of Men and Boys, we've seen a reduction in violent crime and property crimes in this community.
Ms. Inman Johnson, what would you ask the TPD to address?
I think the commissioner is giving a simplistic answer to a very complex problem. And the city continuing to say that the only way this violent crime happens is because people have unlocked cars and they're stealing the guns is erroneous. And they do that so that they don't have to look deeply at what will solve the problems in our community.
So what would you ask the TPD to address immediately?
I would ask TPD to, when young people come in contact with the criminal justice system and it is a misdemeanor or not something really serious, that they get a civil citation, just as Cajum has recommended on numerous occasions, and the shares department is doing that, but they aren't getting the kind of cooperation from the police department. And if they don't get into the prison system early on, maybe they will not, there won't be that kind of recidivism later and the more serious crimes that follow.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the economy now. Dot Inman Johnson will begin with you. What more should city government, Blueprints, Office of Economic Vitality, and the Chambers of Commerce do to make Tallahassee a more desirable location for recent graduates to stay and grow their career? 45 seconds.
I think what the city has to do is concentrate on really keeping an active, vital city core to keep young people here and to invest in incentives to bring more jobs that are environmentally friendly to our community that will keep young people here and working.
Thank you. Curtis Richardson, same question.
I am very proud of what our Office of Economic Vitality has done in that regard. I was on the sales tax committee where we envisioned a portion of that revenue going towards economic development in addition to the 32 infrastructure projects that were identified. And we've had much success. Amazon is one of those where 2,000 jobs were created, high wage, high skilled jobs. Danfoss Turbocore is another example. And even within the city, we're making opportunities available to young people, college graduates, training them to take the jobs that we have in city government. And that's what we're partnering with the chambers to do as well, is to create those high wage, high skilled jobs that will encourage those young people who are graduating from our universities and college-
Thank you.
-to make Tallahassee their home.
Next question on this, and Curtis Richardson, we'll begin with you. According to the U.S. Census, nearly a quarter of Tallahassee's residents live in poverty. Dot Inman Johnson referred to this earlier. Why are so many city residents living in poverty? And if reelected, what will you do about it? 45 seconds.
Well, we, we have partnered with organizations throughout the community that provide services. I, I think primarily what we need to do is to make sure that we have those high wage, high skilled jobs available, because that's what helps people get out of poverty. Put a focus on, for instance, I retired from Lively Technical College. Put an emphasis on not necessarily the school-to-college pipeline, that's fine for those that wanna go that route, but to emphasize vocational and technical training, jobs like welding and plumbing and beauticians even, where they can earn a great living and be able to take care of themselves and a family. And so I think that's one of the things we can do to begin to address that issue.
Thank you. Dot Inman Johnson, if elected, what would you do to address the poverty level?
I can agree with Curtis on concentration on trade jobs, jobs that young people can be trained without going through a long period of time in college or even in a trade school before they have an opportunity to get a job that pays a high wage. And plumbing and HVC, all of those pay good wages. And another reason is to pay apprenticeships, to have paid apprenticeships and internships while they are completing their training so that they have an opportunity to lift themselves out of poverty sooner.
Thank you. All right. We're gonna do a brief lightning round. We're gonna do it a little different this time, and instead of just one sentence, I'm gonna give you 30 seconds on each answer, but it's gonna go quick.
Yeah.
I know. But I am, it's, it's gonna work. You both have a long track record of public service. What's one thing you admire about your opponent? Dot Inman Johnson, you start.
I admire Curtis for his love for his girls.
All right. Curtis Richardson, same question to you.
I admire Ms. Inman Johnson for the book that she wrote on African-American First, and I want to thank her for including me in that as the first African-American male elected to the Leon County School Board.
All right. Happy bicentennial. Tell us one person in Tallahassee history you admire and why. 30 seconds.
Oh, there are so many, but the first one that comes to mind, of course, is the Reverend C.K. Steele and the leadership that he provided in this community in leading us to where we are today and, and establishing that foundation.
Thank you. Dot Inman Johnson, same question.
I need to say C.K. Steele because I won the Living Legend Award last year from the C.K. Steele Institute. But I also have to shout out Anita Davis. She worked so hard in this community recently, and I still mourn her passing because she did so much.
All right. So I've got two, the, these next two questions, I just want one thing, and I know how hard that can be. But what do you point to as your singular signature achievement during your previous tenure on the commission? Dot Inman Johnson, singular, the biggest thing?
That's hard.
I know.
But I would say the Clayman Plaza.
Excellent. Curtis Richardson, the one thing in the last four years?
The half billion dollars that I have advocated for, for infrastructure improvements on the south side of Tallahassee.
Okay. The, if elected, what will be the one signature achievement of your next four-year term? Curtis Richardson.
To continue providing low-income housing. That has been a personal priority of mine, as well as the priority of the commission in our strategic plan.
Okay. Dot Inman Johnson, your one signature achievement of the next four years if elected?
I will bring the city's finances into sound shape by requesting a forensic audit to take care of the problems we've been seeing in that regard.
Okay. Last question on this. If your opponent is elected, what will the city look like four years from now? 30 seconds. Dot Inman Johnson.
It will look exactly like it looks now with the city manager running the government instead of the city commission answering to the public. The voters are the employers of city commissioners, and they have a job to do what's in the best interest of the public, not developers.
Thank you. Curtis Richardson, same question.
I think that we would be a community that is anti-business.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Lightning round is done, and now we are moving to the topic of development.
Okay.
The public is concerned that developers often clear, clear-cut land or bring businesses like gas stations with little regard to its impacts on the environment, surrounding neighborhoods and traffic. If elected, what, if any, actions will you take to address such concerns and mitigate such impacts? Commissioner Richardson, we'll start, we'll start with you. 45 seconds.
You said the community is concerned. I, I, I don't hear that throughout the community. There are instances where we've had this issue. I can tell you Canopy is one, and I have taken a lead on trying to address that issue for that neighborhood. But we, we have our local comprehensive plan, which is our blueprint for growth in this community. And it tells us where growth can occur, how it can occur, and that's what we follow. We have our land use codes, and we ensure that developers stick to those two planning documents and growth documents. There, those-
Thank you very much. Dot Inman Johnson?
First of all, Curtis addressed the Canopy neighborhood in a PR kind of way by putting all the staff in a room with them and telling them there's nothing they can do about the process. Three commissioners can do something about any problem in city government. And it is a big concern. I just had a call this morning from another neighborhood where neighborhood preservation is being ignored and buffers and anything where they are put in development right up against people's backyards. And if it wasn't a problem, I would not be hearing from all of these neighborhoods asking for my support.
Thank you. What is your vision for the Railroad Square Art District? Do you support the use of Community Redevelopment Agency or other public funds to purchase or redevelop the district and why? Dot Inman Johnson, we'll start with you. 45 seconds, sorry.
A lot of people may not remember, but I was this region's representative on the Florida Arts Council and was the reason a lot of dollars were directed to North Florida instead of going to Central Florida and South Florida for the arts. I was the leader in making sure we had a local arts agency that was the Cultural Resources Commission that is now COCA. And I certainly support the arts district because you can't have a vital city without including culture, history, and the arts.
Commissioner Richardson?
I too wholeheartedly support the arts in our community and an arts district. Will that be Railroad Square? We can't make that decision yet because one of the things we have to do is our due diligence to make sure that we have all the studies that are needed in order to make that decision. Because the taxpayers' dollars will be spent on that, and we need to make sure that what we're purchasing, if we decide to make that purchase, that we will have the money to do it. Now, the one thing that I won't do is take money from those neighborhoods that we have promised that we will invest in, the Providence neighborhood and South City with CRA funding, I won't take money from them to put towards the art district because they are, those neighborhoods are our priority.
Thank you very much.
Speaking of the spending of money, Curtis Richardson, we'll stay with you on this topic.
Okay.
Local voters initially created Blueprint in 1989. It's funded through a 1% sales tax, and the Blueprint Board is made up of our city and county commissioners, as you know.
Yes.
It has two functions, support infrastructure and economic development.
Right.
The question is, is the money being spent wisely or is it being spent unwisely? 45 seconds.
I think absolutely wisely. The 32 infrastructure projects that were approved by the voters are on track to be completed. You know, and that was one of the things that we, when we did the first Blueprint 20, Blueprint 2000, and I was on that Blueprint Board at the time, we completed all of those projects on time and within budget. And I am on the IA Board now to make sure that we keep faith with the public in that regard this time around and complete all of the infrastructure projects that this community voted on. We also had the vision to set aside 12% of the revenue from that penny sales tax for economic development purposes, and we're seeing the dividends from that investment come to fruition in projects like Danfoss Turbocore and Amazon.
Excellent. Dot Inman Johnson, same question to you. Is the blueprint money being spent wisely?
It depends on the person determining what an economic development project is. Economic development could be reinvesting in your city and making it a proud, livable city that brings in more development, more businesses, because the employees they are bringing there, they want to see a vital city to support the things they were used to having where they came from.
All right. What do you make, we're gonna shift over to campaign contributions. What do you make of your opponent's campaign contributions? Dot Inman Johnson, start us out with 45 seconds.
Can you repeat the question?
Yes. What do you make of your opponent's campaign contributions?
My opponent's campaign contributions come primarily from development interests, businesses that have current contracts with the city of Tallahassee, which I consider a conflict of interests, interests and a violation of ethics.
Thank you. Curtis Richardson, what do you make of your opponent's campaign contributions?
Well-
45 seconds.
70% of my campaign contributions come from individuals and businesses here in the local community. Even the developers that Ms. Inman Johnson talks about, they're citizens of Tallahassee. They have businesses, they hire individuals, they pay taxes. But her contributions are coming from places like California and Tennessee. These PACs that we know nothing about, there's no transparency, and they're being funneled through a PAC that's run by a colleague on the city commission. There has to be something wrong with that. And I think that this community has to ask the question, what's gonna be expected of a commissioner that's been funded by out-of-state interests like that?
Dot Inman Johnson, 15 seconds.
I have raised over $95,000 in my direct campaign with contributions of $5 up to $200 with just a handful of my donors who are citizens, voting members of this community who could pay 500 or 1,000.
And we're staying with this topic. This race is easily the most expensive local contest of 2024, with the two candidates and the three biggest political committees backing them, raising more than $900,000 so far. PACs aligned with your campaign are funded largely by wealthy donors with local developers and real estate interests backing Commissioner Richardson and green energy dark money groups from California and elsewhere backing Inman Johnson. For both candidates, why do you think these committees are supporting you and what do you think they want in return? Dot Inman Johnson, 45 seconds.
The groups that are backing me from out of the state are climate change cabinet, environmental groups, and- environmental groups, and Alliance for Clean Energy, which is an environmental group. And I don't know of anything I, as a citizen, could give them except being a good environmental advocate for our community, protecting our natural resources, and making sure we are doing things to ensure we have clean water, not polluted, clean air, and our natural resources are protected.
Curtis Richardson, same question.
And William, we're doing all of those things right now in the city of Tallahassee. We have some of the best water that you'll find anywhere. We're protecting our environment. We've been named Tree City USA for the last 31 years. But I think that when we talk about who's contributing, I have a history in public office. I've taken contributions in the past, and all that anybody expects from Curtis Richardson is good government, that I will listen, that I will consider the issues, and that I will make decisions that are in the best interest of this community. My background speaks for itself.
May I follow up?
Nope, we're going to keep going. We've got so much more to go.
Yes, jumping into the city budget. Let's see. Curtis Richardson, we'll start with you on this. The city commissioner voted 3 to 2 in favor of the city's $1.2 billion budget for 2025. And while the city millage rate went down slightly, 3 cents for every $1,000 of property value, it still counts as a tax increase under Florida law because it will raise an additional $6 million in revenue. Should the city do more to tighten its belt and provide tax relief, relief to taxpayers? Forty-five seconds.
Yeah, and that's one of the things we directed our city manager to do as we went through the process, and that's one of the reasons why we're able to reduce that millage rate. We have, if not the lowest, we have one of the lowest millage rates of comparable-sized cities in the state of Florida. So our citizens are getting tremendous benefits, programs and services at a cost less than what some others are paying. We anticipate additional revenue from the school zone cameras that we will be putting up, and so that's why we were able to reduce that millage rate even more. And so I think that we're doing all that we can to tighten the budget, but still provide the quality programs and services that our community has come to expect.
Okay, thank you. Dot Inman Johnson, same question.
The commissioner should have started tightening that belt back in 2022 and avoided an 8.5% property tax increase that hurts the least able to pay that in our community. Tightening the belt would have prevented the city manager from putting on three new assistant city managers at a quarter million dollars in salary each. It would have made them more cognizant of how the finances were being run so that a million-dollar scam couldn't have been run on the city, and it also would have made them more aware of what's happening with their procurement process.
A quick follow-up on what...
That allows...
William, this is happening a lot now. I haven't said anything, but you all are allowing run-on answers in some instances.
You have 15 seconds.
That allows the...
Curtis Richardson, sir. 15 seconds.
Well, what I want to answer is this issue about the property tax increase. That property tax increase, the revenue generated from it, $8 million, was totally invested in public safety, and we've seen the benefits of that investment. 70% of the property owners were not impacted by that property tax increase.
Ms. Inman Johnson, you said you support the city hiring, you brought up the police officers. You said you support the city hiring more police officers, but you did not support the property tax increase to hire them. You said the city could have cut its budget to hire additional officers. Where would you have cut the city budget to pay for additional police officers?
I would have a procurement process that does not allow wasted city dollars like the one out at the Northwood Center where the police complex that is being built by Ajax Construction has been allowed to go from a $40 million budget to a $135 million budget, almost 100 million more than it should have cost. That money could have gone into part of that budget cutting.
All right. Very good. The, in a recent city commission meeting, Commissioner Richardson lamented the bastardization of the negotiation process with the firefighters. Can you elaborate on that and share what you think created that?
I don't know what created it, William, but what I can tell you, it was, that process was politicized. It was dragged on to have an impact on this election. But I'm proud to say that just recently, the firefighters did approve their contract with the city of Tallahassee. There has been an agreement made. It comes before the commission tonight for final approval, but that process was politicized. The city commission has no role in the collective bargaining process other than to approve the final contract when it's agreed upon.
Dot Inman Johnson, do you agree with that characterization? 30 seconds.
Absolutely not. The firefighters went through a negotiation process that started in March 2023, and it has been 19 months since it started before they finally got a contract. They never got their raise for 2024 because that period had already ended. They agreed to that contract because they were tired of being pressed down, not having the money for their family.
We're going on to the city charter amendments. How will you vote on the city charter amendment one, which effectively doubles city commissioner salaries and ties them to the same pay as county commissioners? Please explain your answer in 45 seconds. We're going to start with Ms. Inman Johnson.
Firefighters beginning at $44,000 for their full-time salary for 53 hours a week. The city commission makes $45,000 for their part-time job, and they are asking to have their salaries doubled. It seems incredible that in that kind of situation, they could be asking for their part-time salaries to be more than double what a beginning firefighter has been making in the past.
So you will be voting no?
I'll be voting no.
Curtis Richardson, same question.
We are putting the issue to the community to decide. We are not giving ourselves a raise, and it's not for Curtis Richardson. I've done this for 10 years at the salary that has been approved for this position. What I'm looking for is what comes in the future, young people who are not able, because they're not retired, they're not able to serve because they cannot afford to on a $45,000 salary.
And how will you be voting?
I'm voting for it.
Okay, thank you.
Keeping with amendments, but this time to the Florida Constitution. In November, November's general election, voters will be asked to approve or reject an amendment to the Florida Constitution that will legalize the recreational use of marijuana for adults age 21 and older. State-licensed entities will be authorized to distribute marijuana and related products. Why do you support or oppose Amendment 3 to allow recreational marijuana? And in your opinion, how would its passage impact the city of Tallahassee? In 45 seconds, Curtis Richardson, we'll start with you.
Well, early on, I did oppose the amendment before I knew all of the nuances of it. I based my response then on what I had experienced as a 17-year-old student at Florida State University when marijuana was being widely used. It was the first time I was ever introduced to it. But now that I know more of the details of what the amendment will do to legalize it for those 21 years of age and older, to limit it to the industry that is responsible for the growing of marijuana and the sale, and making sure that the marijuana that is sold is not laced with fentanyl and other dangerous chemicals...
And how will you be voting?
I will be voting for it.
Dot Inman Johnson, same to you.
As I said in the previous debate, I will be voting for it. I'm still going to be voting for it because many of the young people who have been introduced to the criminal justice system have been introduced to it by, because of use of marijuana. You have medical marijuana concerns, and if it's safe to buy from those, it is safe for use now, and it puts regulations in place to control it.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to closing arguments. You have 45 seconds to speak directly to voters. Dot Inman Johnson, start us out.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you today, and I look forward to the next two and a half weeks to make sure you have a clear understanding of my vision for the community. I am completely, completely committed to working for all of Tallahassee, all of Tallahassee, even those who may not vote for me on November 5th, because I am invested in making this the best city it can possibly be. I ask for your vote on November 5th or beginning next week when early voting starts on the 21st.
Thank you. Curtis Richardson closes out.
Thank you, William. What I would say is, my record speaks for itself in terms of my representation on the city commission. I ran for the commission because at the time, there had not been a commissioner who lived on the South Side of town, represented on the commission. And we don't run from districts, but I thought that was important because there were so many African-American neighborhoods that had been neglected or underserved, and we've seen a sea change in that. I think that this city has moved forward under our leadership. We're growing. We're a prospering city, and every, my vision is for every citizen, regardless of where they live in this city, to feel like they live in the all-America city that Tallahassee has twice been designated. And that's what I hope to achieve during these next four years.
Thank you. Thank you to the candidates and to our audiences for joining the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee, WFSU, the Tallahassee Democrat for this program. You can find a replay of this forum on our YouTube pages, tallahassee.com and wfsu.org. The recorded broadcast will be aired Wednesday, October 23rd at 11:00 a.m. Eastern on WFSU 88.9 FM. So tell your friends.
And remember, early voting for the general election begins October 21 and ends November 3rd. Election Day takes place on November 5th.
If you have questions for the superintendent's candidates, that's the last forum we have, please email us at news@tallahassee.com, and please look for all coverage of this race and all races on tallahassee.com. Thank you so much for watching. We're out.